It would call to order this January the 23rd, 2019 Franklin County Commissioners Meeting.
Roll call.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
President.
Commissioner Waymire.
President.
Chair Howard.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
If you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, Father, we do come before you this morning with humble hearts, with the task ahead of us. We just pray for this meeting and for those that are making decisions today. We pray for our road crews, both city and county who are out today, to try to make our streets safer, just be with each one that has to be out today with our law enforcement, be with each one that has a part today. Amen.
Okay. Takes us correspondence organizational business up in there. Takes us on to public comment. Say we have one signed up. Okay. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussions limited to five minutes, and the Commissioner will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pawnee Road, Ottawa, Kansas. This is addressed to the Commission, no one personally. Just another page in my book that I'm not going to write. Today is the day to redefine the Franklin County Commission, also their advisor and boards. The advisors have led the Commission astray in the past. I and others are disappointed with the Commissioner's past voting record, folding in on professional scammers. Moreover, the disrespect and treatment of people who exercise their right to visit the Commission open meetings. Joe Ferguson, who made a request to serve on an advisory board, was not even given consideration. Joe served his country in the military for decades. He being a man of integrity and honesty, as I see, had a high security clearance while serving his country. Joe, in his retirement, volunteers in hospitals and ministers to people in need of peace and encouragement. Joe sacrificed for years for America and for what America stands for and to the America's defense. I know by attending meetings, a board may well think we are there because we don't trust them. With that in mind, I looked up on a computer what trust means. Of course, there are variations of trust, but so many are anonyms of trust, the opposite of trust, straightforward. The things that destroys trust in any relationship is lying and stealing and other things. The definition pointed out the action of the judges. Judges are fed with kickbacks, fines, or given perks. By definition, that is corruption. When you don't follow the laws of this land, and more particularly of the planning and zoning rules, that side in with people that break the laws makes you no better in character than they are. I remember each of you, except Mrs. Dickerson, voted and supported the lawbreakers and even spoke publicly on the lawbreakers' behalf of the motocross fiasco. I hope you can face yourself when you look in the mirror. Not everyone was fooled. I watched the Commission for years. In 1993, a friend of mine was fined by the Commission breaking the law. I thought if the fashion didn't follow the rules of law, I might learn more by watching them. The Commission treated me like an interloper. There was shameful actions that were committed, and even one county employee was fired for wrongdoing, theft from the county. If the Commission do their sworn duties, everyone will be more content. Some of us have a vast amount of experience. You can freely draw from this experience and would benefit from it. We will willingly give our opinions. Joe Ferguson was done wrong, period, and also the neighbors of the motocross deal. Can the people take time to read the rules and investigate those plots? As for the motocross conspiracy, the motocross bosses run away in the night, leaving a mess and embarrassing so many people. I guess the big guy, or big brother, works in miraculous ways. I don't appreciate what you did to Joe Ferguson, in part, as I too served in the military. I joined in 1957, 12 short years after World War II ended. In training, I dug holes to live in, feared for my life that I might be sent to combat, bathed in a steel helmet, and lived in conditions worse than a homeless today. Maybe I should have done what some of you did, avoid that risk, stay where you feel safe. Safe because people serve to ensure the safety of our families and our community. Please don't build a path of failure. Show that you have backbone and sound character. Make this country a livable home. Truly one and another with respect and humanity.
One minute. You have one minute left.
Okay, thank you. Live by the golden rule and be upright and honest. Thank you for your patience.
Anyone else? Okay, takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need approved today is, there's no claim vouchers, tax change orders in the amount of positive, $353.40, and approve the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for January the 16th, 2019. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. Takes us to items of business. Our first item to discuss today is the 2019 Franklin County Tax Sale.
Yeah, you'll perhaps recall that we finished up the 2018 tax sale, that was about September of last year. That cleared the tax rolls for the 2012 and prior years. We didn't include the 13 properties that were eligible at that time because it was a large tax sale anyway, and we were trying to use our first tax sale to clear up some of the little, I mean, there were so many little oddities, little pieces of land that, you know, due to surveying errors, didn't have any listed owners, and so we've got that accomplished. And now I think we're, staff is ready to proceed with the 19 tax sale. That would include the 13 properties, the 14 properties, and then in speaking with the City of Ottawa, they've asked us to include the Coves properties from 2009 on that as well. And so that would be approximately 120 properties. A couple of things, though. One, there are approximately 27 other properties that are eligible for foreclosure, but those are properties that the treasurer has on payment plans, and she is monitoring those on a monthly basis, and the owners are making their payments. And so those 27 properties are not counted amongst the 120. While that is a large number, what we saw in 18 was so many of those are going to redeem before actually going to tax sale. So what will happen, if you guys wish to move forward, I mean, there are a lot of steps. The first step would be to pass a resolution, but we will send out demand letters to each of the owners, and right off the bat, that'll knock out, 30, 40% of them will probably pay a year's worth of taxes once they get that letter. And then as the time goes by, others will redeem, and I think we'll ultimately have, I wouldn't be surprised if it's maybe a third or even a fourth of that number ultimately go to tax sale, with the exception of the Coves, of course. And so what I'm trying to ascertain is if you guys have the desire to go ahead and get that process started for 19, and answer any questions that you have.
Are we still going to use the same company, Lawrence, that we used for the last?
Yeah, you know, in talking with Jody, Jeff worked incredibly well with both of us. He's happy to come down again and speak to the board. I know two of you weren't on the Commission when we hired them last time, but yeah, he, I would recommend that we, we use them again, so.
Seemed to go very well. You say the surveying errors, the no owner properties, they will be on this one?
Well, no, we cleared a lot of those up with the last one.
Oh, okay.
So.
I know there's a lot of investors that just wait to pay their taxes, you know, until, yeah, they don't care that their name's in the paper. And if you go on By Eisenhower and see the building that's going on from those lots that were sold last time, and there hadn't been any new houses there in years, and all of a sudden it's like, wow. So, yeah, I mean, I can't see that it would, like the Coves, to get those back on and get some investors that are.
Can we get a list of the, or talk with Jody or get a list from her on the ones that are on payment plans that are eligible for foreclosure?
Absolutely.
I understand that, you know, people get behind, but I guess frustrating thing about a payment plan, say it's somebody's personal house, they would have to be paid off free and clear to be three years delinquent, or else the bank or through escrow would step in and pay the taxes. So these are people who completely own their home. There's plenty of equity. They're in effect using the county to get a loan.
Yeah.
That's not the business we're in.
Yeah.
They could easily go to a bank and get a loan, or it's vacant land and they're a business and just choose not to pay it.
Yeah.
If you can't pay your taxes for, I mean, I guess that effectively puts us in the lending business, which it just isn't, and isn't what we're here for. And, you know, this is, not like they're one year or a few months late on taxes, they're years.
Four years.
Years, yeah, years late.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's a good policy-wise place for us to be, as in collecting and loaning money.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Colt.
Because people do have plenty of options, other than getting their house foreclosed in a tax sale. It's not that we're, you know, put them out on the street.
Yeah, they do.
You're not asking them to pay all the way up to right now, you're asking just to pay the one that, or the year that will get them off of the tax sale.
Yeah, four years. If you owe four years of back taxes, you're eligible for tax sale, and to get off of that list, you just have to pay the, you know, the earliest year now.
And if you, oh, sorry, if you look at that, I've looked at it in the past, most of them aren't people who live in those homes. They're either investors, or they just own a lot, or a piece of, a strip of land or something that really has no use, no income associated with it, so that, I mean, we're not.
Well, and we've had this conversation before, and I've spoke with both the prior treasurer, Debbie Huff, and Jody. It's my understanding that we no longer do that, that the properties that we have on payment plans are just properties that have been on them from years past. So I don't think it is still an ongoing practice. I could verify that, but I will, I mean, I've got the properties on my spreadsheet. I can have them to y'all by 10 o'clock.
I think that's kind of the answer I got in the past, too. Well, if it's been a year or two, year and a half since we've done this last, apparently there is still a program. I mean, if you're four years late, you're taking years to catch up, you're not catching up. I mean, and you don't have to get back to zero, you have to get back to less than four.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So if it's taken you more than a year to get back to less than four years delinquent, then.
Yeah, yeah.
I think either we need to set a line in the sand for next year, we don't want to put any payment plans.
Well, and I'm happy to have Jody come in as well, and she can talk to you all directly and just kind of maybe give you her, her thoughts on it, but I, I agree with everything you're saying, Colt. I think it's as a policy, I don't think it's something the county ought to be doing either. Now, you know, whether or not we renege on agreements that we've already entered into, that's more problematic to me, but.
Sure, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to say right now as of tomorrow. I would want to give them a year to go get other financing options, but again, that would put two and a half years since the first time we talked about it, and that's plenty of time to.
Yeah.
Why have the Coves been on since 2009?
They, so we have put the Coves on a tax sale before. In fact, I think we've done it a couple times, and they never sell. And they never sell because of the special assessments, yes, but it's my understanding that the city is working on a solution to that, and I think this year's tax sale will be a lot different. And so I'm excited about the possibility of getting those off and purchased, because that is a lot of developable land as well, so. And just to let Commissioner Stottlemeyer and Dickinson, let you two know, the firm that we use to do our tax sale, they do tax sales for Douglas County as well. They give us, they charge a government rate, which is an incredibly competitive rate for, they represent a number of municipalities, and so it's, it really is a pretty good deal for us. Jeff Hyman is the name of the individual who does it. Happy to have him come down again. Three, you met him last year. It sits entirely up to you. I suspect he will bill us for that time, so I would want to be cognizant of that, but he, you know, it, the process went off without a hitch last year. The sale itself was remarkably successful. We, I think we sold every single one of the properties, so, yeah, pleased with it, and I'm excited to get another one started if that's the wishes of the board, so.
No, we did, we did the same thing back when I was coming, I mean, I don't know if it was the same company, but I know when Lisa was here, I know we did it a year at a time or two, that they, you know, I don't remember exactly who it was back then, but I know it's happened, it's not, nothing hadn't happened before, and worked good then.
Yeah. Well, and I think what's exciting is, after this year's, if we include 13, 14, and the Coves, that will largely give us a completely clean tax roll, assuming that they sell. There are a few, you mentioned surveyed properties, Colton. There were, I mean, there are a handful of oddities still out there that Croucher literally like could not figure out. And so for the time being, we, instead of continuing to throw money at it to try and, we just, I'm not sure what we're going to do with them, but we've reduced that number from 50 to like five, so we've, you know, knocked the majority of them out, so.
We got a value of the taxes that haven't been paid?
I can get that. I don't have it as I sit here, but certainly can have that information to you.
Are there any properties out there that the county still owns that they just can't get rid of for one reason or another?
I don't believe so.
I know, I know there has been in the past, but they, like there was two in Wellsville, and they donated them to the city of Wellsville. They, one was against the railroad tracks, couldn't do nothing with it. Another one was in a slough south of town, got rid of. Had one area down, it was Nick the Skunk running, not big enough to do nothing, and they deeded it to the person next door had been mowing it for 10 years. I didn't know if you had any of them still around or not.
No, not currently.
Something brought up years ago, and it just got forgot. There's a parcel of land, when Old 50 was vacated, north of Old 50, along Interstate 35, basically it's a narrow strip of land, maybe 10 feet wide between the interstate and Elizabeth Layton Center, that the county has title to. There's no functional use for it, you couldn't do anything if you wanted. It's like a hallway. But Elizabeth Layton Center would be a logical owner of that, and it would clean that up.
Yeah.
It was created when the state vacated Old 50.
That strip right there where you come to the stop sign on Old 50, straight ahead there?
Yeah, yeah, it would, it would pretty much be that, so. Maybe we need to look at just deeding that to them, if the board agrees, but it would put some use to it, some logical, clean it up.
Sure.
Or you want just a consensus to move forward, or you want a motion to move?
Yeah, just a consensus, because you will have to pass an actual resolution to get the process started, and so that'll be, probably be the next step, unless you want me to get Jeff back down here.
I don't think we need to get Jeff, and, but if you would bring the treasurer in, that'd be awesome, and then we could decide maybe whether we want to move forward or not with the ones that are on payment, or what, or she can answer questions anyway.
Sure.
About policy.
Happy to do that.
But I would say the ones that you have currently, for sure.
Okay, very good. I can do that.
Or are you moving forward with it?
Yeah.
Don?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Okay, next item of business, get back to the agenda here, will be to discuss Franklin County's Waste Disposal Service and whether or not the county should solicit bids from other prospective providers. Eric?
Yeah, and I, I might let Janet jump in here, as well as she sees fit, but we've used Ottawa Sanitation for certainly as long as I've been here, and I think appreciably longer, to do our trash service. They sold, I believe that was last year, right? And prior to the sale, Ottawa Sanitation increased our prices, and so if you look at the attached spreadsheet there, there's a pre-sale price, and that was kind of the county's historical price that we, we got our services for. And then the sale price is the amount of the services when Ottawa Sanitation sold. And then the new price is, is what we're being charged today. And so if you look at that, you can see, I mean, we went from 425, and correct me if I'm wrong, Janet, but this is like a year ago.
We, we were paying 425 up till June of last year, so within six months, we're up to $2,272.85.
Yeah, I was at a meeting when they came out and talked to one of the smaller towns in the county, and they were told by the new company that there was not going to be any raises, they were staying at the same price, but I don't know what they've done to those smaller towns, but this is definitely not staying at the same price.
So, so like Derek said, that pre-sale price, you know, we had been at that for years, and we did receive notice from, well, we didn't receive any notice when they increased it, we just saw the bills were increased, and I contacted Ottawa Sanitation, the previous owners at that time, and said, you know, can you explain this to me? And they said, well, we hadn't raised your rates in a very long time, and, you know, so we had to raise your rates to, you know, cover our costs, and that was understandable. I mean, those are fairly low, and a lot of those are being picked up, you know, almost every day of the week. And so, I mean, it did double, but, I mean, it still seemed fairly reasonable. So then after the new ownership took over, then we received a letter from them telling us what our old rate was and what our new rate would be starting in January. So, you know, just the, the timing of when that came in with meetings and the new commission taking over, we wanted to get this in front of you guys to see how you felt about possibly going out for bid. I mean, there are a couple other trash services, you know, here in town, that, you know, we could potentially use.
Firstly, I don't, that doesn't even look reasonable to me, the difference in the sale price and the new price, looks kind of.
Is that monthly, or?
That's monthly.
It's outrageous to me.
Do each of these that are picked up six days a week need six-day-a-week pickup?
That's another question that Derek and I discussed when we were going to put this on there. Like, we've not done any evaluation to know, I mean, like, if, if you'll look at some of these, we do have one out at the county shop on the Fuel Island, and maybe David knows and can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is just a regular cart, like you would have at your house, that when people pull in there and clean out their vehicle, they just throw the trash in there, you know, and it's being picked up three times a week. I mean, I can't see that we're cleaning that much trash out of vehicles that we need to have that dumped three times a week. So, I mean, I mean, and if we're going to go with, you know, one time a week, if you look down at tourism, they're paying $20 a month to be picked up once, once a week. So, and I, and I don't know, we, as you can see, we saw the one increase for tourism, but we did not receive a letter, and I did check with Susan yesterday, and their trash service does remain unchanged at this time from the price that it was when the company was sold. So we do have one other one that was not changed, for whatever reason, and that's the South Annex Dumpster, and it remains 105.50 a month, and it's picked up six times a week. So I, again, I don't know if that lower pri, if that one remained unchanged because they're not picking up a lot of trash from that one, so, you know, they didn't feel the need to. I don't really know what the.
And I have, he was supposed to be here today, but the storm, I was going to have Brandon Sands, my maintenance director, come in and talk about this a little bit, but given the, the snow and ice, he's, he has other priorities this morning. But I think the first step, is I have him evaluating each of these locations and making a determination on how often we need the trash picked up, and I want to give him a touch of time to do that, because I want to know exactly what, if it's the board's wish to put this out for bid, I want to know exactly what it is that we need, and I don't want to get a price on something that's, you know, excessive. And so he's going to figure that out once I have that. My thoughts are, with the, the board's blessing, and like we always do, I'll bring an RFP in, and you all can approve it, and we can solicit bids, but again, I just wanted to get a feel from you on whether or not this is something that, that you want us to do, because Ottawa Sanitation has been a partner with us for a long time, so.
And I think I would touch base with Ottawa Sanitation and tell them what our, yeah, what, what we are feeling, that, you know, if these are truly the prices that they want to charge us, that we will be, and, and they can submit a bid, along with everybody else, but unless there's the low bid, or much more comparable to what it was before, then probably we would not be using them for our service.
Well, Ottawa Sanitation, I agree, has been with us a long time, but this is now new ownership, so.
You're right.
I mean, they, they kept Ottawa Sanitation's name, but it's not.
You're right.
The same people that we have dealt with for a long time.
And I, I will share with you that, I mean, you guys can see what the price was when we were doing our budget in, you know, June, July, and August at $425. So we didn't budget for an increase of twice that per month, let alone four ti, four or five times that. So this is basically unbudgeted expenditures.
My personal opinion is no way we can justify just taking that new price without going out there for bids and seeing if we can't do something better. Would we ever look into doing it ourselves?
Yeah, it's funny, because Janet and I talked about that yesterday, and how silly it is that, you know, we pay someone to come dump in our transfer station, but when you really think about what that may take, we, Janet and I have talked about it, but we haven't looked too far into it, because from an equipment standpoint and staffing, like I just don't know, just off the cuff, without looking, it seems like there would potentially be a large upfront investment, that it would take us a lot of time to recoup, but absolutely.
It's only us, we only have. It's only us, we only have eight places, nine places or whatever, but, so, you know, to have a truck and probably a person, you know, that's twenty, that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year just for your person with that, yeah. So, I mean, I think that, that's probably not...
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to look into it, but it's, I think it would be a significant cost.
Waste your time? I see no reason not to just go out for bids?
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, take that for bid for this, seems unreasonable increase.
I think the bids and maybe talking to yours and see if some of these can be eliminated that we don't really actually need.
I mean, if we go to the courthouse, the courthouse, six days a week, and that's over a hundred dollars a day.
I will tell you, the courthouse does, they, we have two dumpsters at the courthouse, and that does support the jail, the district house, so it supports the whole block, and, and obviously, the jail is the major contributor of that, you know, with all the inmates and the, you know, cleaning of the fil, facility, the food service, you know, all of that. So they are the, the primary user of that, but it does support the whole block.
Historical society must pay for the records center?
I believe they do, I can double-check on that.
Glad I'll be back in front of you here, you know, as soon as I have some idea of, of what, how much, how many pickups we need, so.
Very good.
If there's nothing else on that, takes us to staff reports.
Yeah, um, so Janet and I are in the process of preparing for our retreats, and I wanted to ask the board a couple of questions. One, location, do you have any, any requests there? Last year, we went up to the Overland Park area and considered, you know, I mean, greater KC area, we talked about Lawrence a little bit, talked about Emporia a little bit, we effectively went where we got a great deal on a, a conference space, but if there are specific requests from the board, you know, I want to take those into consideration.
I don't have anything in particular that was fine, or any of the other places you mentioned is fine, too. I mean, wherever you can get the best deal for us, I think.
I have a question before we move forward with the retreat. When we were at our new commissioner training, we had a whole meeting on open meetings. So can you tell me, there, there was questions on how that is possible and still be able to...
Yeah, well, I will tell you, we treat it just like a normal meeting, so we notice it up in the same way we notice up every other meeting. There's an agenda, just like there is every other meeting. It's just a retreat, so we do it in a different location, it's still open to the public, so anyone who wishes to attend can still attend. It's basically exactly the same as, as this meeting, it's just in a different location, so.
Informal setting, so you can just kind of away from distraction and, and interference, really. As far as your phones off and take the day just to dedicate to...
Yeah.
You want the hot tub, you mean?
No, 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 no.
I'm only one person, but I just prefer we stay in Franklin County somewhere, just to make it more available to the media and the public.
I thought it worked great last time, but...
How mu, was there media at the last one?
There was none.
And it's probably because it was, they couldn't afford to send somebody that far and spend that much time. They can't afford to send them here, so how are you gonna send them to Emporia?
What kind of timing are you looking at, like a, a all-day, or a...
Last year's was, and, and that'll, that's a nice segue. Well, I, I need an idea of where you want to go, but that, I wanted to talk to you about, you know, what your priorities are for that retreat, and give you an idea of kind of what we're planning on putting in front of you. But maybe before that segue, is there, you know, like, Don wants to keep it in Franklin County, I've got two of you telling me that, you know, you like the way we did it last year, what are, Ian and Roy, what are your thoughts?
Oh, I don't have an objection to keeping it in Franklin County.
Is that what you want to do, or?
I, I think it'd be better if we did keep it in Franklin County and make it available to whoever wants to come.
I, I was just thinking, I, I know today is the, the meet and greet with the, our Topeka legislators. I, I didn't know if we had it in Topeka, if we could send out a invitation for just to have them come over and talk, or we really don't, wouldn't have anything really on the agenda that would, then it really doesn't make any difference to me.
Yeah, I think the...
As long as we're keeping everybody, our public happy, I, I, it really doesn't make any difference where we go.
I would like to just keep it in-house for this meeting.
What's that?
Keep it in-house for this meeting, I'd bring in legislators and all those folks, so we can discuss Franklin County.
Yeah, I, I've already voiced my opinion, I thought, feel the same way, Colton, I thought it worked great last year, we got a lot out of it, accomplished a lot. I can't see that any media or anyone else can't get to Ol' Ait there if they want to attend it, if they give us the best deal there. But I thought it worked really well last year, and we got a lot done there.
It's not a decision-making meeting either, it's a information, it's a day of Derek talking is pretty much what it is, just kind of going through all the departments and updates on, you know, whatever he's been working on.
Exactly, like I said, nothing we done wasn't gonna come back here before anything was, was voted on or anything like that.
The purpose of the retreat is to, to help you all get comfortable. I mean, I, I don't know how many times I've sat in one of these meetings and said, you know, "Weather permitting, I would do my job on the courthouse lawn." Every, with the exception of some of the legally privileged stuff I do as the counselor, there is not a single thing that I do, not a single thing, that I would take any issue sharing with any of the twenty-five thousand some-odd residents we have of Franklin County. Like, I don't, it's, it's about getting you all in an environment where, you know, the, that promotes a, a flow of discussion to really get your ideas out there, and, and you're exactly right, Commissioner Howard, every single thing we discussed last year, you know, I'm thinking about Proximity Park and the budget, I mean, it all ended up being discussed on multiple occasions in, in this very chamber, and so I don't, and if there were any coma issues, I would keep us so far away from that that, you know, we wouldn't even be considering it, but there are, and I mean, retreats are a very common form of, you just, you have to abide by coma, you still have to notice it up, you still have to invite the public. You know, it'd be different if I was sending you all emails saying, hey, let's sneak down to Fayetteville and Meade and not letting anybody hear a thing, but that's, we're literally discussing it here, we'll notice it up, I mean, it's...
One thing I like about the retreat is being a new commissioner, to not really get an in-depth look at our different departments until budget, you know, that means it's, you know, six months before we actually, you know, get to that, and, and to be able to look at each of those before we get to that would be, would be great.
If it would, if we do keep it here, we could do, uh, tour facilities during it, and end up somewhere in the county afterwards, but, or prior to it, we could tour facilities and then head wherever we're going to.
Tour facilities on the fourth.
Say, I've got, already got that down for the fourth.
Good deal.
And I'm not sure we can be prepared quite by the fourth for the agenda, or for the retreat, so. So Ian, would you like to keep it within Franklin County, or are you open for wherever?
No, whatever.
Okay, good enough. In terms of an agenda, I guess first let me ask you, what would you all like to, to talk about at the retreat? I, I, you know, I, like Ian has mentioned, kind of an overview of the departments and the goals and, and whatnot for each department, and that's no problem. What else would we like to...
I'd actually, I'd found the agenda of last year's the other day, and I thought it, it went perfectly, and I know you went over personnel, thoughts, and, you know, kind of your long-term thoughts and what you would recommend us doing there, and went in depth there, you went in some of the legal updates and, and what you're doing as far as your job as a counselor, and that was, kind of test on my ability and what, you know, your thoughts and strategies were there. That was very helpful, which I think what else you did, but I, I asked, that's what I thought was perfect.
Okay, well, and yeah, I, I certainly still have the agenda from that.
Basically, just made sure everybody at the table, all the players at the table had the same, you know, knowledge of cards, I guess, the same, same deck to deal from, everybody was on the same page. Almost encyclopedia-like, but it was very, very helpful.
Yeah, I thought it was good that, you know, a lot of us weren't on the same page on some things, but being able to have the discussion like we were able to have, a lot of us were able to get on the same page in, in a roundabout way.
At least if there was a, I mean, I think we would have, or several subjects where at least you had time, you could kind of in a frank setting say, well, this is why I think this, and, you know, I disagree, you know, and you could, even when we didn't, didn't agree, we could find common ground, but it was...
Yeah, no, I, I'm happy to do that, and, and staffing was a, a large part of it, and, and certainly, I, I think, kind of going over a little bit of that very same stuff for Don and Ian's education would be helpful, as well as additional thoughts that, that we have for this year. I, I think the, you know, the liability stuff, the litigation we're involved in, certainly no problem. Janet gave a great fund balance update, and we talked about where our various funds are and where they're heading, how they got there, I think that's, you know, I, I think capital improvement priorities is a big one, because I, we have needs, and, and really, what Brandon and I need to know is what does the board prioritize, because that's, that is the quintessential board decision. We've got, you know, these big needs, how would you like us to prioritize that? So that'll, you know, probably be a topic. Long-term financial plan, something Janet and I are working on. I mean, we can fill a day without breaking a sweat, I just want to make sure I catch it all, so that I'm not leaving any of you disappointed.
Maybe a good time to, each commissioner can express concerns in their district with, they can see what's going on in their district and problems each district is facing, and, 'cause I don't know what's going on in the other districts that might be similar.
And we did a little bit of it the other day, the only other thing I could think of would be maybe to bring David in and just talk about, I guess, infrastructure and roads. Maybe go over bridge inventory, where we're at, if we're falling behind, if we're keeping up, you know, what are lowest, and, and where we are on that, what needs to be replaced, and kind of looking in the future, that's something we haven't talked about.
Or...
Most counties, and then also roads, I mean, currently, we do a four-year rotation to Chip Seal, that's our, that's how we choose to put money in, is that the, still the best idea, the best way to maintain our...
That would also be a good study session, maybe, instead of bringing him to the retreat, but put that as a study session.
Yeah.
Just to talk about roads and bridges and all that.
When, when are we thinking on this? What's your...
Probably sometime in February.
February.
Mid-February-ish, probably, I think some of that depends on, you know, how, how much Janet and I can get done, and what else pops up before then, but I think that's a realistic goal.
Weekend day, what do you, what do you, when did you last year?
It was a weekday, it might have even been a Wednesday, I don't know, I'm not so sure, we didn't, I...
I don't remember whether we did it on a Monday study session day or not, to tell you the truth.
It wasn't Wednesday, it wasn't during the meeting day, but sometime in the middle of the week.
Study session day would be good, maybe?
Any other thoughts on that?
I like Colt's idea, as you mentioned it, he brought it out before I even said anything, but I think Dave's been working on, I know I've talked to him a couple times, it sounds like he's coming up with some good new stuff, that different stuff, and, and I know they've been kind of hamstringing the last few years because of Proximity Park and the, and the dollars, trying to get it done, eliminated from other things that his department could do in the last few years, and I was there when we started that, so I understand it totally, that just happened, you know? But it just automatically stressed him a little financially for going out and improving any more routes until that was done and completed, and I'd like to hear his ideas of where he wants to go with that, when we get that on a roll, and that's not the topic anymore. I understand now that is the topic, and it needs to be the topic, but once we step away from that and it's taken care of itself, then I'd like to know where we're going back, you know, to when, back when we had, it wasn't because the commissioners now didn't want to do it, if they just had their hands tied to where they couldn't do it. And I'd like to see where we're gonna head when we get free of the economics of that as far as building, when it starts to develop and move on its own, and, and then we can go back to some of the things that were being done a few years ago, two, three, four miles a year of complete, you know, upgrading, you know? I know they whacked it way back there and did thirty-six miles, and that really strained they for quite a while, but they got a lot done. So, you know, like I always say, they, when they did the coke development out there on the road, I didn't think so much of that, but once later on in years, what do you think about it? And I think they didn't do enough. I mean, when it was all started figuring what it was gonna cost a few years later to do the same thing somewhere else, and if they'd been thinking back then, they'd have done three times as many roads at that same price, and sounded like terrible then, but sounds pretty good now, so. Just, and I think David, talking to him, I think he's headed in that direction, getting ahead of the curve of what's coming, because you know nothing's gonna get, ever get cheaper in that line, so.
We had it on a Monday last time.
I thought we had it on a study session day, and I was just looking at the schedule for February. The only, I see there's a study session on the eighteenth, and then we got commission meetings, which I agree with, I don't think we probably want to do it on the commission meeting day, so. We have the twenty-seventh and twentieth commission, eighteenth a study session.
We could shoot for the eighteenth.
That, that really is the only study session I'm seeing here, other than the fourth, which we already have planned for touring the buildings.
I would say let's tentatively shoot for that, and then, you know, we'll know in the next week, I think, probably if we can get that locked in, and I, some of it is gonna, you know, we'll have to find the space, but I think that's enough time to, you know, I don't, I think we'll be able to get it done, so.
Say, say the date again?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
February eighteenth.
Tentatively.
And then, you, you talk about the retreat versus a study session, and, and certainly, pretty much everything we discuss at the retreat will ultimately get discussed at a study session. I think the benefit of the retreat is it allows us to cover a lot of ground in a relatively short amount of time, as opposed to, you know, what you, you know, what Commissioner Stottlemyre and Dickinson might learn in one day at a retreat, it's gonna take, you know, three, four months worth of study sessions, given how infrequently, you know, every other Monday, and so, and I'm happy to bring David in for a portion of it, but I also think, you know...
Personal issues were a good example of that. You stood up there and said, this is what I recommend, we need to, you know, institute a consistent pay plan and raises, and this is how I'd like to do it, and this is, we need to really think about putting resources here. Well, we turned around, we had to budget for it, we had, every time we give those, it's in a public meeting, we have to vote on it and say, well, can we afford it this year, this is, you know, but we really want to stick to this pla, I mean, you introduced the idea, but subsequently, it was in... I mean, you introduced the idea, but subsequently it was in, who knows how many meetings on the budget side and then the, our regular meetings.
That's all I have.
Okay, so we, we've worked two snow events since our last county commission meeting. We had a crew work overnight last Friday, Saturday, and we had a crew working last night to try to get ahead of, ahead of this, this weather. Today, we've got folks kind of finishing things up, so that makes the roads safer. So, we've got folks doing that. The chip seal discussion that we had last week, I've got all of the quantities and whatnot put together for this year's plan. I need to go back through the paperwork one more time, so that will be brought to you folks soon. Along with that, I've had conversations with some of the adjoining counties and the, the city of Ottawa. We think that there might be some benefit if we all put this on the street at the same time to get more interest in a regional basis. So, I need a little bit of time to explore that with the respective people in, in those positions to be able to bring back a good recommendation for you. And I've also started the early research on what it would take for us to do our own. And then, on top of that, in, in light of a couple of recent deaths, you all probably heard about the KDOT driver recently. A few weeks before that, there was a, a person working at a landfill up at, I believe at Ham's Quarry. All of those things, you know, brought to mind, safety. And so, we're, we've had early conversations to really take a look at our safety program, not just within Public Works, but countywide. And so, they'll be, we'll be working on those things as well.
I hope they stress to make sure they put your, wear the seat belts.
I, I've told them a couple of times, and, and I know that Road, the supervisor informant have stressed that as well. My message is the most important thing is that they are able to go home at the end of their shift. Everything else is secondary to that, so that's the focus. But we want to really look at our, what we have in place and see how we can enhance that and, and make it a little more relevant for today.
I just went to the Chamber of Commerce banquet on Saturday night, and David Lee was the recipient of one of the awards. Congratulations, David, which, which one was it?
It was the Russell Kreitz Award. Very, very humbling to be even thought of in the same line with the folks that have won that in past years. It's quite a, I'm very grateful.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Main focus was his, David's work on Proximity Park and that thing.
Legislative, no, legislative, was it?
Legacy Square as well.
Legacy Square, yeah, yeah.
Legacy Square too, yeah. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, I'm going to assume that all my weeks are not going to be as busy as the last one was. Wednesday started with the city, county, school board meeting, and we didn't discuss a lot, but it was a good meet and greet because I did not know all of those people there. Thursday and Friday, we were in Topeka, Commissioner Stottlemyre and I, for the new commissioner training, which was very informative, it was almost information overload when you realize, and I don't know how many times I heard, oh yeah, you could get sued, but it's all good, it's all good. Some takeaways I got from that is definitely I do not know everything, and I will not ever know anything about any of the departments that I'm working with, but as a commissioner, that's not what I need to do. What I need to know is to surround myself with people who do know and know who to call if I do have questions about things. Another one, we had the meeting about the open meetings and open records. When you reply to email, don't hit reply all, because all of a sudden you're having a discussion with all the other commissioners. And, and save all those emails. I'm like, oh, okay, this is good to know now and not a year down the road that I should have been. But now I know I will, and if they're ever needed, I will have them. One of the other things was that all the elected, elected officials are, are co-equals, which means we are not the boss of them. So, it behooves all of us to learn how to work together and not have agendas, because it makes everything happen easier. Saturday morning, I went to the legislative coffee with Representative Finch and Senator Tyson. They gave, they're early in their session, but gave an overview of kind of where they think they might be going, and also the fact that the governor is maybe not on the same page as a lot of them, and it will be very interesting to see how this session plays out. Saturday evening, I went to the chamber banquet, and then Sunday afternoon, I went to the Martin Luther King Junior service at the auditorium. And on the back of the pamphlet was this quote, which is perfect for our commission. It's, the time is always right to do what is right, and I wrote that then at the top of my page for my commission meeting.
Don?
Yeah, I, I agree with Ian. I know when I told Janet, you know, I'd like to go to this, well, you know, you only go to it once when you start. And the last one I went to was 18 years ago. So, you know, a lot of things, even things have changed in the last four years, let alone 18 years. And, and I can, because of going to a lot of conferences and stuff, this had to be one of the best. I don't care who it is on this board, could have been at that meeting, and got a lot of good, they had a lot of good people there. I liked it so much better, I love the KC meetings, but this one had so much more direct information. You didn't run around all over the building, well, am I going to go to this one or am I going to go to that one? The only bad part about it is, is overload, we was all in the same room, but they stuck to the subject, they stuck to, and they had really good people there. I mean, Public Works Director from Douglas County was there, hour-long conference on roads and issues and, and what you can do, what you can't do. And then there was the gentleman there, retired administrator from Johnson County for 20 some years, give us a lot of background on commissioners, how, how commissioners come to be and, and all the different aspects of being a commissioner and how things, why they change and how you think every county in Kansas is the same and not. I mean, every commissioner set up, and you'd be, and I was surprised how many counties now, there's been a big gap or turn into five commissioners. There's like three or four more counties this year coming on, and there was a long time there, there was nobody changing. At like about time we did, you know, and there's several of them coming back with that. And I got a lot of, I've always enjoyed those kinds of things, talking to other commissioners, and that way give me the opportunity to meet two brand-new commissioners that are coming on from Coffee County. But otherwise, I wouldn't get a chance to maybe see them once a year, was able to talk to them and, and that. And one new commissioner from Miami County, and I think that all three of them seem like they're going to be real good people to have as neighbors to us, and, and, and we talked about the, had the big, long, hour-long session on the Lincoln County case, and they had the attorney there that actually represented the, not the sheriff, but the deputy. And give me a lot of deep background to that case I never, all the years that, that I was here, never knew about or understood. And we have a neighboring county right now in a lawsuit that they'd have, but to this meeting, they may not be in a lawsuit right now, you know? And understood the do's and don'ts of, just like you mentioned, you know, with elected officials and how to get along and, and the importance of getting along, you know? And you, each of us is how, each of us is our own island, but, but hopefully you don't treat it so. You know, I got a lot of good, it, it was a day and a half of, of, they gave us very little downtime. They kept us going constantly and, and all kinds of training and education. And I really got a lot of enjoyment, and I appreciate that county allowing me to go to it, because I think I learned a lot. I would, I actually debated whether I would or not, but I'm sure glad I went now, after I went, it was really, they kept us, we kept ourselves very separated, which is good. I mean, Ian was on one end of the room and I was on the other, but we was all sleeping with people that we'd never met before and maybe never meet again, but it was very, it was a, I enjoyed it, very good. I think it was a good, I think K-Camp and K-Camp and K-Work both are coming up. There's a lot of good new training programs that are going to be offered to us for free. And just, David already knew about something I was talking about, and we talked about it the other day. I know one of them was the safety on, if we did our own chip and seal training, the people that did the safety work, K-Camp actually offers a course in that, and they can get a certificate and agree, a degree and everything. So, if something did go wrong, you would have something to go back on, that these people do have a license and the training and to do it, so. I thought it was very beneficial.
I attended the joint luncheon also last Wednesday, and that's the only thing I've been to since the last meeting. So, January the 30th, we have commission meeting, and February the 4th, we have the study session. We go meet here for the study session on the 4th and then just go out from here, correct?
Yeah.
All right, if no one has anything else, look for a motion to adjourn. Got the motions, second, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.